The Salem City Council Committee on Administration and Finance co-posted with the Committee of the Whole is meeting in council chambers today, Wednesday, May 31st, at 6:00 PM for the purpose of discussing operating budgets for departments in the fiscal year 2024 and any associated capital improvement projects. This meeting is being held primarily in the city council chambers at 93 Washington Street on the second floor. Individuals may also listen or view the meeting via remote platform called Zoom by using webinar ID 878-6302-7327, password 636125, but the primary meeting is here. And currently present from the Committee on Administration and Finance are all members except Counselor Watson felt, and also joining us from the Committee of the Whole is Counselor Proznerzki and Counselor Cohen. We do have some changes to our agenda tonight. We have had to postpone our discussion with the engineering and public services departments. They were unable to join us tonight. That has been rescheduled to next Tuesday, the 6th, so anybody who was tuning in for that should join us next Tuesday, the 6th, at 6:00 PM. Engineering and Public Services will become a part of that meeting at that time. We are still going to discuss the operating budget for the Salem School System tonight. However, we are going to take a recess in advance of that since our superintendent is currently attending one of our schools graduations and was not anticipating having to be first on the agenda tonight. So we are going to take a one-hour recess until 7:06 PM, which is exactly one hour from now, and at that time, hopefully, we will be joined by our superintendent and we'll proceed in discussing the budget for the school. So I will hear a motion from anybody to initiate that recess. Counselor Hepworth?
So moved.
Motion that we take a one-hour recess from Counselor Hepworth. All those in favor? Three hands plus my own. We are in recess until 7:06 PM. Okay, 7:06 PM, and we are returning from our recess. In the interim, we have been joined by more members of the council. Counselor Watson felt from the committee has joined us, and also joining us are Counselors Marcelo and Dominguez. And we are also joined by our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Schreik. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
And you have the floor.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for having us. Joined by our chief of our chief Assistant Superintendent for Operations and Finance, Elizabeth Pauli, who's going to share this presentation with me. I also want to just acknowledge that there are two school committee members beyond the mayor who are here. Our newest school committee member Veronica Miranda is here. Oh, sorry. And Mary Manning, longtime school committee member is here as well. I'd also point out that Ms. Manning is the Chair of our finance subcommittee and has been instrumental in this process leading up to today. So just want to call out that they're here as well. So I'm just gonna, we're gonna walk you through presentation that we gave to the school committee, some adjustments. I just want to also start by saying we very much appreciate the support of this council. We're excited about, I mean, I've been very pleased to have more interaction now that the world has opened up a lot more, and I look forward to the continued, you know, dialogue between the council, the school committee, and the school district. I would love to come back at some point to do a state of the schools like we've done in prior years. Tonight isn't that presentation, but I would welcome the chance to do that in the future if you would allow that to happen. I'm just gonna start by talking about, we have three core values that are instrumental in designing our, the work we do in the decision-making, and a budget is always an expression of values, and so our three core values are belonging, equity, and opportunity, and that's the lens through which we look at designing our budget on an annual basis. Next slide. Our vision in the Salem Public Schools has not changed. Over the last few years, we're interested in creating a culture of belonging that allows students to be locally engaged, globally connected, and fully prepared to thrive in a diverse and changing world. And I was very proud to come from the New Liberty graduation just before here where we saw, it's one of the most joyous occasions, graduation, especially a place like New Liberty, where the path is not always a straight path, but our students get to the stage and they're ready for what's next, to thrive in the diverse and changing world that they'll be entering into. Next slide. A few years ago, we developed an equity statement. This is at the core of our work in the school system. If you look in my offices, in the chambers, these statements are up in multiple languages, and this is again a filter through, in which we look at the decisions we make. We know we have systemic inequities that exist across the school system, you know, part of the history in institutions like schools, and we're working very hard to ensure that there is equity in the decisions we make and the way we use our resources. Next slide. Currently, we have, we're finishing out a strategic plan, and we're in the process of redesigning our, redoing our plan, which will be shared with our, with the school committee and the public in the advance of the upcoming school year. But we have four priorities right now. They're about developing our workforce, which is the core. Our talent is instrumental to our success. Academic excellence is our second priority, which is why we exist as an organization, and sometimes it's hard to remember that at the core, we're an academic institution because people are asking a lot about, asking schools to do a lot right now, which we happily accept that responsibility, but at the core, we're an academic institution. Third is about the support systems that are so crucial, especially in this moment in time, around, you know, the well-being, the health, the well-being of our young people and our families. And then finally, it's about being efficient and strategic in the development and implementation of our systems. Next to each of those priorities are a series of initiatives that have driven our work over the last, this is my third year since I came three years ago, and like I said, we'll be issuing a new plan for the public to see sometime this summer. These are the outcomes that we hold ourselves accountable to. I think we've, so we call this the North Star. We've hit home runs on some of them, others we have been stuck, and others we've gone backwards. For instance, chronic absenteeism has been a very difficult metric to move over the last few years with the pandemic. We've seen some real gains around access to pre-K, our, the percentage of educators and staff represent the racial and linguistic and ethnic diversity of our students. We've seen some improvement in our dropout rate over that time, and so, you know, these are the things that I would report out on if we, when we do a state of the schools. Next slide. So the budget priorities for this upcoming school year. Again, we start with this idea of allocating resources equitably. We want to make sure that the decisions we make are aligned to our strategic priorities. The goals that we have as a school, as a district, our individual schools each have improvement plans and their goals, and then we have a district master facilities plan, which some of you are aware, that we put together in advance of the application for the new high school. And so those are all, you know, aspects of our work that we align our resources to. It's really important that we do stakeholder engagement, which we managed to, we had a number of different forums with the public and with our staff, and with different advisory groups that we facilitate as a school district. We make, I strongly believe that our school leaders, our leadership teams are, should have a strong say in how they allocate resources, so I want to give them as much flexibility. If we're gonna empower people to, people want to work here as leaders of schools, they want to be able to have some flexibility in order to use funds in a way that matches the goals that they've set for their school. And then for us, we are, you know, in the, we're planning and trying to begin the transition to get away from using ESER funds because they run out at the end of, at the conclusion of this fiscal, upcoming fiscal year, you know, like ARPA funds that the cities receive. And so that's, that was a priority for us entering this budget process. Next slide. Just some of the high-level context that we're faced with. This is not going to be a surprise to many of you. Expenses are going up, right? Inflation has caused there to be driving costs in everything we do, and we've seen high significant increases in our electricity costs, our, we've seen, you know, obviously the cost of just doing business and everything we do has gone up, but we've also seen rising costs related to our homeless transportation. You know, we've seen a rise in homeless students, which has caused there to be, and that's all driven by the economy. We have a, we're happy and very fortunate to welcome so many wonderful families to Salem State. In doing so, you know, there is cost to make sure we're transporting students that we didn't have before. So that's one piece of context. We have commitment to contractual requirements that are really important. We, you know, the core of our workforce is obviously our educators, and, you know, we're only as strong as the people who are in those seats, and we need to be competitive. We're gonna, we're in the third year of a three-year contract, or we'll be entering the third year of a contract with the Salem Teachers Union, and we have contractual requirements and commitments that we have to make. Unfortunately, our state aid is basically stagnant. The good news is we came out of minimum aid, which means, which is a huge development for the Salem Public Schools, in that every now additional student we receive, we get the full allotment of per pupil expenditure. For a few years, we were not, because our enrollment had dipped so much, but two factors got us out of that minimum aid. One is our enrollment went up for the first time in a long time this year. A lot of that was at the high school level, and we also saw increases in the percentage of students who are English, multilingual English language learners and low-income students, and that does drive the, that also drives an increase in the, in the aid. Unfortunately, on the flip side to it, our charter reimbursement went down. So all the gains we experienced, we would have experienced budgetarily from an increase, I believe it was 80 or so students, which is significant if you get the full amount per student. We didn't realize because in the, on the back end, we, our reimbursement for charter dwindled, and that has to do with the formula of how, you know, as students stay in charters for a period, an extended period of time, we, the reimbursement numbers decline. And so the good news is we're, we, if our enrollment continues to go up, then we're gonna see some important increases in state aid. However, we do, we do worry about what those charter reimbursement looks like, and that's advocacy that we can continue to do at the state level. And then the other thing is we have to be cognizant that our ESER resources are disappearing at the conclusion of this fiscal year, and that's something we are, we had hoped to, you know, move more positions over to the, the operating budget than we were ultimately able to, and we have a lot of planning work to do this summer in advance of next year because we know that the ESER funding is running out. At the end of the day, the costs, our costs are exceeding expected revenue, and that's why in this budget, we did have to eliminate a series of school and central office positions, which Elizabeth will talk more about. The good news is for us that the moves were achieved by right sizing the number of classrooms and central office staff we had due to the decline in enrollment that we've had over the last, you know, five-plus years, right? Even though our enrollment has gone up in the last year, the decline has been significant over the last five years, and we didn't, we chose not to, to address that because of the pandemic and students coming back from COVID, but this year, we were in a, we were forced to be in a position where we did need to right-size, and we had to eliminate both central office and school-based positions.
Dr. Schreik, will you just very quickly define for anybody who may be following along what ESER means?
So ESER is essentially the COVID relief funds that we, we received, like the city's ARPA funds that the schools received, specifically ESER funds, and the last batch of ESER is, runs out on, I just heard this today, September 30th, 2024. And we have budgeted it out, so we have, we'll continue to make, we'll continue to invest in what we have through next school year, but then the number, then the funding runs out at the conclusion of September 2024.
Thank you.
Next slide. So this is the process, just so you know what we go through, and again, as I said, Ms. Manning is the Chair of our finance subcommittee, so she leads a lot of this work. We, we do quite a bit with the public, and we have multiple forums, as you can see on here. We have presentations to the school committee, budget hearing, and then, so folks understand, each school comes and presents their budget first internally to myself and the deputy and assistant superintendent, and then they present to the budget, a subcommittee of the school committee. They come and each school goes through their budget priorities, allocations, and this year, schools knew that they didn't, there wasn't money falling out of the sky to add new things, but many schools did make some trades. They shifted resources around their strategic priorities, and those are the conversations. We want to get our schools thinking more and more about, it's not always about adding, although that's nice, right? But it's also about how do you make shifts in your resources? How do you make trades around what your strategic priorities are from year to year? And that's the work that we need, will continue to do with our school leaders to make sure that they're meeting the needs of the students that they serve. So this just gives you a sense of the timeline. Obviously, we're here, it says June, we're not quite in June, right? But tomorrow's June, and we are here presenting to all of you our budget. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Elizabeth Pauli, who is in her first year, as are, very grateful that she is here, but, you know, we want to take, we don't want to scare her away in year one, and this is her first time presenting to the city council.
Let's see. See if I can do this.
In theory, you can use those other microphones as well, just turn them on. If they turn green, they should work, but they don't always turn green.
Oh, okay. I'll sit back a little bit. I, and I think everyone has a hard copy, everyone in the room has a hard copy of the slides that we're projecting. I didn't miss anyone, right? Excellent. So we come to you this evening with a budget request of $71,154,000, thank you, $142. This is a 3.5% increase over the FY23 budget. And we arrived at that, at that ask and that percentage increase after the long journey that the superintendent just detailed around working with schools, asking them to work with their school site councils and their parent groups, working with the school committee, and really looking at where our expenses were growing, where we could trim, and what revenue offsets we could apply to the budget. So I'll go into deeper detail on that in a moment, but if you wanted to look at our full budget, it is available on the Salem Public Schools website. It is right on our homepage, so you could read the entire thing, which I think shares some of the accomplishments of this year and some of the exciting things in the budget for the year ahead. So as the superintendent mentioned, our expenses are higher than the proposed budget, so as you do look through the materials, you will see that the total budget is actually $72 million, and I'll explain why in just a moment, but our ask to you tonight is $71,154,142. So as you know, a budget is a story of our revenue and expenses. Our revenue, our largest source of revenue is local contributions, so thank you to the City of Salem for supporting the public schools. Salem contributes not fully two-thirds of our budget, but almost. The next source of funds is Chapter 70, which Dr. Schreik talked about. That is the state's main source of funding for the public schools, and we did see an increase this year despite seeing cuts in other state aid. We also get grants from the state, from the federal government, and from private grantors. ESER, the federal relief funds, has been the largest source of funding, or grant funding in the last couple of years, and we have used that to support recovery programming, including tutoring, extended summer programming. We've expanded our pre-K programs to help young children get ready for school. We've invested in enrichment, and we've added quite a few positions. In fact, I believe we have 54 positions that are funded by ESER at this moment in time. So that is the story of our revenue. The other half of our story is expense. So we began the process in October by looking at our known expenses in personnel. Luckily, we have contractual agreements and collective bargaining agreements that lay out what our salary increases will be, so it's fairly predictable to know what our personnel expenses will be. And because personnel is the largest percentage of our budget, this is the right, it feels like the right place to start. It's nearly 80% of our budget is personnel. On average, in the coming year, teachers will receive a 4.4% salary increase. This includes their step and lane change. Other increases for other collective bargaining units range from 3% to 6.2% when you include the step and the lane change. Non-union employees are projected to receive an increase of 2%. So those are our personnel increases, and those account for, as I said, nearly 80%. It's actually 78.5%, and that is very consistent with previous year's investments in personnel. But this year, we did see significant rising costs in our non-personnel expenses, and those really, the superintendent outlined the categories to which those fall: homeless transportation, out-of-district tuition, electricity, and insurance. So I'll take a minute and just talk about each of those briefly. Homeless transportation has been a significantly growing increase over the last year due to the increase in the number of students who are experiencing homelessness. Last year, in March, there were 145 students experiencing homelessness, and in this March, there were 208 students experiencing homelessness. So that is an increase of 63 students, or 43%. Our students experiencing foster care remained fairly stable. Last year, there were 48 students in foster care, and this year, there were 51. So not the same kind of growth that we have seen in our students and families experiencing homelessness. I appreciate that this is a community that welcomes all families, and I think that is something to be proud of. We are grateful to have them in the Salem Public Schools. The transportation costs, though, are not insignificant. Last year, for example, our homeless transportation budget was $650,000. This year, we've spent $800,000, so the costs have increased pretty dramatically in that line item. The next category is out-of-district tuition. So there are students who need a special education placement outside of the district who enroll in private or collaborative settings. Those tuitions are projected to increase substantially in the year ahead. The state has notified us that private placements will increase by 14%. The tuition will increase by 14%, and collaborative placements will increase by 6%. So this translates into a dollar increase of about $1.3 million more in out-of-district tuition. We anticipate being able to offset some of this by prepaying tuition, as was done last year, and we know that this number could increase if we have more students who need and receive out-of-district placements, but as you recall, we do have a safety net that the school committee and the city council approved last spring when they, you, established a $550,000 stabilization fund. So we know this is a growing expense. We're trying to mitigate it by prepaying tuition, and in the event that it grows faster than what we have budgeted for, we are grateful for the stabilization fund that was created last year. Electricity. So the cost of our electricity has increased by 20%, and our usage has also increased pretty dramatically in the last few years. We are taking steps to mitigate this. We're participating with the city in an ESCO project to look for cost savings that would allow us to be greener and to save money on energy, but at the high school alone, our electricity usage has tripled since 2019. So we are trying to figure out both why and how we can reduce our consumption. So we have projected a 30% increase in our electricity budget based on the actual spending of this, this fiscal year. And finally, our insurance has gone up. This is not our health insurance, which as you, more than most, would know, the city bears the expense of our health insurance. This is our liability insurance, which has increased by 5% over each of the last two years. The superintendent referenced that we are also a smaller district than we have been. Our enrollment a decade ago was 4,500 students. In 2019, that was 4,000 students, and in October of 2022, it was 3,700 students. Now, the good news is our enrollment goes up over the course of the year, but the state dipsticks in in October and says, this is your enrollment, and in October, our enrollment was 3,709 students. So that's actually an increase over last year, and we're proud of that. We hope more students will choose and enroll in the Salem Public Schools, and this growth is promising, but it does come with consequences that we are smaller. We do get less state aid. So as we looked at these expenses and tried to figure out how to balance our revenue from the city, our revenue from the state, with these expenses, we, we first looked at where we could cut. And when making those cuts, we wanted to make sure we were not compromising the student experience, and so we looked to make cuts in places that would not dramatically increase the class size for children in the Salem Public Schools. We seek to maintain an average class size of no more than 25 in the elementary schools, although it's lower in the earlier grades. So our goals for K1 and, or kindergarten and 1 are 21 students per class, 23 students in grades 2 and 3, and 25 students in grades 4 and 5. Those are our goals. And in just about every case, we are well below those. For example, at Witchcraft, grade 2 has 17 students per homeroom. Bates has 23 students in grade 5. Bentley has 22 or 23, which actually is a little bit of an outlier because we place more students in kindergarten in Bentley because of the dual-language program. So we looked at whether we could reduce the number of homerooms while staying within our, our class size limits, and we believe the cuts that we have recommended will allow us to do so, both at the elementary school and at the middle school. I did neglect to say that the Collins Middle School actually has the smallest average class sizes with 16.2 students per class. So we came to the conclusion that a modest number of cuts to the number of homerooms would allow us to stay within our average class size, right-size the district, and get to the right budget number. So we have proposed a net of 10 cuts to schools out of 16. We sought to be proportional in the cuts, so first, we started with class size, then we looked to make sure that no one school or department was bearing more of the cuts than most in the right sizing. So the net is because we are also adding positions. We're adding two positions at the Early Childhood Center because of growing enrollment. Collins actually added two special education teachers during the course of this school year, so they will be new on the FY24 budget, and Bentley is shifting a coach to a teacher position. In several instances, the cuts are vacant positions. So, thank you. So in the central office, I would just point out in my office, for example, which is in the bottom right corner, the Finance and Operations, we do not have an administrator or an office manager because that position has been vacant. So we are not going to fill that position, and that is a cut. It is also the case, on the left-hand side of this column, in the school-based cuts, that in many instances, due to retirements or teachers opting to leave for other reasons, the teacher whose position is being cut can find a job either in the school or elsewhere in the system. So while we have a net of 10 school-based cuts, that does not mean that 10 people are losing their jobs. On the right-hand side, just as you're looking at the slide, these are the central office cuts. We're proposing six of those, and as I said before... of those. And as I said before, several of those are vacant positions. Several of those are people who are moving to different positions. And one or two are people who are leaving the district. So those are the cuts that we are proposing. And as Dr. Zurich mentioned, this isn't the only movement in the district. Several of the schools have traded positions or are reimagining what positions might look like. So for example, the high school has traded a paraprofessional for a clerk position. That's net of zero, so it is not reflected here. Okay, so we looked at our revenue, we looked at our expenses, we made some cuts, and then we got to this chart, which I think is probably easier for you to see on the handout in front of you because it's so small on the screen. The total of our expenses for FY24 actually comes to $72,268,629. And here, I've organized it by the 18 cost centers. So you probably remember from last year that the school's budget is organized into 18 cost centers. Eleven of those are schools, and the others are services supporting the schools: the district admin, instructional technology, multilingual learners, special education, et cetera. To get from $72 million to the $71 million, which we felt we had to do, because the $72 million would be a 5% increase, and we believed that would exceed the resources of the city, which has always been very generous with the Salem public schools, but that is far beyond what the average increase to our annual budget has been over the course of the last 10 years. That's where we propose to apply offsets from our school choice revenue, from our prepayment of special education tuition, and then from other receipts as they come in. Facility rental will help support overtime costs for custodians, for example. So we got our budget down to the $71 million number, and believe that we have created this budget in a way that is consistent with the creation of prior-year budgets, which included all of those things: cuts, revenue offsets, and looking for areas to trim. So if you do look in the budget book and you see the $72 million, that's where it came from. I would say some of the cost center changes are driven by personnel, but many are driven by the non-personnel expenses that I've already described. So in student and family supports, for example, that's where the homeless transportation budget lives. So their budget increase reflects an increase to homeless transportation. Instructional technology has never had, as a department, a line, a dedicated line for computer hardware, and now we do so much with Chromebooks that we are proposing to create a line that would allow us to continue to replace outdated, old, or broken Chromebooks. So their budget appears to have a significant increase as well, but that is a reflection of the direction we have moved in during and after the pandemic. Our operations budget looks like that is growing too, and that's where our electricity bills live. Other jumps that might stand out include Salem Prep. The difference there is actually just a difference in assumptions, more than cost of delivering the program. So in FY20, in the development of the FY23 budget, there was an assumption that more of the revenue for that school would come from out-of-district placements, and so students who are paying tuition into the school district. This year, we're assuming fewer out-of-district tuitions for Salem Prep because that is a reflection of the students who are actually there. So if more students come from out-of-district, that revenue will increase. But we've based our assumptions more conservatively on the number of tuitions that are there at this moment. So their budget looks like it is increasing as well because of that assumption. So that is the table, and the next couple of slides show you what this looks like in charts, which might be easier to digest. So when you look at our budget, the majority of it is allocated to the 11 schools that we have. The largest allocation is Salem High School. Collins and Witchcraft follow behind. So 67% go to schools with 33% going to district-wide supports. What are district-wide supports? Well, those are multi, support for multilingual learners, that is professional development, that is special education, that is instructional technology, that is the business office and the superintendent's office. So there are seven cost centers that are folded into that district-wide supports that comprise that 33%. The allocations, I would just add, are very similar to last year. The high school was the largest school, followed by Collins and Witchcraft, and this allocation matches the allocation from last year. So that is what it looks like in pie chart form, where the dollars are going. I did mention that personnel is the largest category of expense. So when we look at our personnel costs, and remember, those are almost 80% of our budget, about 69% of that goes to instructional staff. So that includes teaching, early childhood, district-wide teachers, like music teachers, behavior specialists, substitutes, long-term subs, stipends for teachers, and extended day salaries. The next largest is administration. So those are supervisors and administrative services. In case you're wondering what that is, those are clerical and other general service supports. Yeah, so I think the takeaway here is that instructional, that personnel is the largest part of our budget, and instructional staff is the largest portion of our personnel budget. And our non-personnel expenses. So I feel like a broken record around transportation and tuition and utilities, but that is what we are spending our non-personnel expenses on. And we, the growth this year in our expenses really is in those categories. So, yes.
Just with the transportation, do you have a breakdown about what percent of that is for students, just transporting them to school, and then what percentage is the homeless population that we're seeing, or out-of-district placement?
Yes. I will have to think about that for a minute, but yes, I have that. The annual regular-day budget for transportation is about $1 million. It's a little bit more. It might be $1.1 million. And the homeless transportation budget is $800,000. The special education transportation, I'll actually have to look up, but I can look that up while we're talking. The growth, though, in the regular-day transportation is predictable because we have a contract, a three-year contract with NRT, and so that is increasing somewhat, but I believe it is increasing by less than $100,000. So the growth in our expenses have been in homeless transportation over the last, this past year, and what we are anticipating for next year. And I will, as soon as we go to questions, I will get you the special ed number. So just as we wrap up the PowerPoint, the, this is what the school budget looks like, and you can see the allocation I shared before. It's Salem High, Collins, and Witchcraft. The elementary schools, including ECC, comprise about 51% of the school-level budgets. So when we look at enrollment, it matches pretty closely to where our students are. The secondary schools, including New Liberty, Salem Prep, and the high school, are 49% of the school-level budget. And then, do you want to say anything about that?
Okay, great, good. So just the final thoughts. You can see our budget request of $71,154,142, which is a 3.5 increase over the prior fiscal year. We talked about the links to our vision, values, and priorities. Elizabeth talked about maintaining the integrity of the student experience, which I feel strongly this budget does. We were responsive to the community staff, our school leaders, and then the school committee has given us a lot of feedback about this budget, on this budget. You know, we've appreciated the process this year, working with Anna Friedman, intra-mayor, or acting mayor, Bob McCarthy. We met early on to make sure we were working within the fiscal constraints of the city. And there was a lot of dialogue, really, from December as Mayor Driscoll was moving out. And so we do think that this is responsible within the city's constraints. I do just want to, you know, we are, we do have to be prepared that FY25 could be really challenging with the COVID relief money ending, new contractual obligations, and, you know, hopefully, the state aid isn't flat. But if it is flat again, we're gonna, there's gonna be some challenges that we need to prepare for. And we're committed to doing a lot of that work, even this summer, to get, to get ahead of this, because it, you know, we could be coming back next year with, you know, painful, more painful cuts. But with enough time and thoughtfulness and partnership with the city, I'm hopeful that that doesn't need to happen. And then again, the budget is online for people to review. And we, you know, again, we appreciate, I very much appreciate the support of the city, the city council. You've been great to work with and have been very supportive of the schools. And you're, you know, the generosity has not gone unnoticed and has made a significant impact on the experience of young people. So just turning it back over to you, if there's any, or Councilor McLean, I guess the show is yours, and so I'll turn it back to you.
Oh, I think the show is mostly yours. I'm sure you're about to get a lot of questions, so, you know, have a sip of water, take a deep breath. A lot will be asked. I'm gonna start with some sort of big tent questions. I think first I will ask, it was noted a couple times in passing that the actual appropriation request is a little bit lower than the budget request. If you could speak specifically to what are the offsets between those two numbers?
Yeah, do you want to take them?
Yeah, the two largest are the $575,000 prepayment of special education tuition, and then we propose to spend $500,000 from our school choice funding. So we're getting to over $1 million with cash we have on hand. There are other offsets, for example, the facility rental that I mentioned. We get reimbursed for one of our ROTC, or half of our ROTC teacher salaries. We are reimbursed by the STU for part of the STU president's time. So the other ones are significantly less. So the two big ones are the prepayment and the school choice.
Thank you. The second sort of big tent question I will ask relates to the ESAR funding. You were very clear that that funding is time-limited, and that, and that time is coming. I think I heard you mention that we have 50-plus staff who are being funded by that right now. What does the school system stand to lose when that funding runs out, both at a district-wide level as well as at the school level? I mean, what losses are we facing?
Yeah, I think the most, that's a great question, and I'm glad you asked that. The, a lot of the positions are, the biggest chunk of the positions, over $1 million, is our pre-K program. And that is where I'm most, if you want to know what gives me panic attacks, it's the pre-K program. Because we did fund, you know, we've been hopeful, and we'll continue to work with our friends on Beacon Hill around funding for early childhood education. But that is the most significant. The other roles are behaviorist positions, they're, we have tutors that we've used since COVID. They're, I'm not suggesting that they are important positions, but we never banked on those positions, being here beyond three years. The, so if you would ask me what I'm concerned about, the thing I'm most concerned about is just over $1 million that, which is the majority, which is in pre-K salaries for the classrooms that we opened at Bates and at Horace Mann, teacher, paraprofessional professionals. We've also invested in the ECC expansion as well. We've also opened after-school care. So that is what keeps me up at night. And that's what I think will have the most significant impact on the, the school system a year from now if we can't figure out a way to fund that. The other roles, I don't see as significant. We didn't have them pre-COVID, and I think they've been very helpful in helping with recovery, but, but not as essential as clearly pre-K has been.
Sure, I share your concern. I also want to ask you about the fluctuating, I guess I will say, enrollment number. You noted that that is, that is a factor in the calculation of the state support. The moment at which that number is being measured factors into the formula. What is the source of the fluctuation? Why is that number different in October than it might be later?
It's really interesting to watch, now that it's my third year in Salem. The enrollment is at its highest right now for us. We are at, I think we're over 3,800 right now. And so we grow almost 100 students from the beginning of the year, and then we seem to then decline over the summer. Some of that this year has been, we welcomed all the families to Salem State. That helped our numbers grow. And the state is reimbursing us, I want to be clear, for the students who are in the homeless, you know, who are experiencing homelessness at Salem State. So we are getting funds because they weren't calculated as part of our October 1 data. And because the state places them there, we will, we will eventually get resources for this fiscal year and for next fiscal year, because they didn't, they weren't part of either calculation. But we do see students come all year long. We, you know, there's a transient population here. And so unfortunately for us, they take our enrollment to determine our funding at the worst possible time for us, which is at the beginning of the school year. If they took it now, we'd have 100 more students than we did in October, right? So, and there's, that's just the formula that the state has. I'm hopeful that our numbers will continue. We seem to, we're seeing upticks at Salem High School, in particular, with students coming back to the district, which I think bodes very well. And we got to continue that trend. You know, we're over 900 students now. We were under 800 students two years ago at Salem High School. So I think we've got to continue to invest in the programs that people want, our CTE programs. I seem to be, obviously, they're in demand, our advanced coursework, our athletics programs, our music programs are starting to bring, you know, more students back, and we've got to continue to do that. I'd love to see, you know, I'm not going to declare victory, but if we can get over 1,000 students at Salem High, and I know that's Principal Burns that I talk about, how can we get to that number? You know, that, that will bode well for us in, you know, in the future. But, you know, that's, you know, there's a lot of competition out there, and people are making decisions about what they think is best for their children. We've got to make sure we're more competitive.
Chronic absenteeism. You noted it's been a little bit intractable. What are you seeing as the roots of that issue? How do you see your strategy to address it reflected in this budget? Do you see a relationship between that and the homeless transportation growth and cost? How does that play out in the numbers?
Well, I mean, the good news is, right now, we're trending much better in chronic absenteeism for this current school year. We're almost back to pre-pandemic numbers, it looks like, from before. And we have, Salem had really high chronic absenteeism even before the pandemic, like, shockingly high, in my opinion. I think a lot of it does have to do, transportation plays a part, for sure. I think the fact that we don't have neighborhood schools plays a role in that. But ultimately, I think chronic absenteeism is a symptom of engagement. And when kids are engaged, they come to school, right? And when they're, they feel good about school, they feel like they belong. And I'm, you know, we're seeing some major improvements at Salem High School. Collins this year, we've seen improvements in chronic absenteeism. But we've got a long way to go in that I think it's predominantly, especially for the upper grades, has to do with, you know, not that parents don't have a role in getting kids to school, but, you know, middle school and high school kids, they're the ones who, you know, motivate themselves to get up and get to school on time and every day. When it's younger, it's harder to put that on the kids themselves. Parents are much more involved in that. So we've got to create, continue to invest in our engaging, engaging young people. There is, we're very fortunate. We have a new grant coming in for middle school sports that we just, we already invest in middle school sports, but we have another $30,000 coming in next year for just only middle school athletics. I think that will help. We've invested in this budget in home visits. The schools came to us in each of their presentations, Mary can attest to that. They asked for money to do home visits. They want to visit families that they don't feel are connected to schools. Some of the schools in Salem have done that historically, like Bentley, but more schools want to do those visits over the summer with teachers and staff to build relationships with families who don't feel that connection to school. I, it's not about kids being sick. It's not about kids, you know, bad parents. It's not about that. It's about levels of connection and engagement that I think play a significant role. I think, yeah, homelessness does factor in. Kids getting, there are some families that do struggle to get to school. Salem's not the easiest place to get around. And because we don't have neighborhood schools, if you miss the bus, or, you know, it's not easy to find your way. Salem High and Collins are not exactly, you know, around the corner from where the majority of our kids live. So, you know, we've got to continue to, to make sure that the transportation options, you know, I dream of being able to be, be able to round up kids who, you know, who wake up late or miss the bus in the morning, to be able to get as many kids- To be able to get as many kids to school, because it's not like they missed the bus and they can easily walk to school. That's challenging, especially in inclement weather for some of our families.
And um, out of district tuition.
Yep.
Significant cost grew quite a bit. What are the services that those families are traveling to obtain? And do we have any hope of at some point providing those services so that we're not paying that traveling tuition?
Well, that, so that, that increase is a statewide issue. The 14% has been a source of uh, issue, you know, advocacy that's been going on with districts, the superintendents association, school committee association. Because it's more about increases, it's not about the number of kids, it's about the increase in tuition. You know, we have, I think, our numbers are still lower than what they were pre-pandemic in number of kids that go out of district. Salem does a pretty good job, I think, of offering programs for specialized programs for kids who need it. But we can't serve every child, and you know, we do have students with significant disabilities that we can't necessarily serve in the district. That's not a product, the budget number is more of a product of what we're projecting for private placements for, for students that are very involved. 14% is exceedingly high, and so there's a lot of tension. I, I'm hopeful, I mean, this is a place where I hope in the end, the number will be a lot lower and we'll be able to, um, you know, we've said if any of the money comes back, it'll help us. Pull stuff off of Esser, but um, we had to budget 14% because we just needed to be conservative in the event that that's what actually happened. But there's uh, I know our state rep and our senator are lobbying on behalf of our districts right now that 14% is exceedingly high. As you heard the number from Elizabeth, that's what that number is about. It's, it's not about more kids, it's about the, the cost of tuition um, going up.
Thank you for that clarification. We're going to move on to questions and comments. Is, is there anybody here who is not planning to ask a question? Cause if so, I will just go right around the table. And I think everybody probably has something to say, so I'm just gonna start right here with Councilor Dominguez and we'll just make our way around for round one.
Thank you, Chairman McLean, thank you, uh, to the school superintendent and assistant superintendent for being here. Very, very well presentation, clear. I had a couple of questions, but I'm gonna eliminate myself one because everybody have a question. My only question is on the part, what do you say on page, page 14? The multi-language learning education seemed to change 22% negative. Related to what I see on the chart of the. I think 54% of the students are a second language learning. So that kind, to me, doesn't kind of relate to exactly who we are here in Salem. So can you elaborate a little bit about that, please?
Yes, and I was remiss to not mention that, so thank you um, for, for raising that. Salem's growth is in multilingual learner students, and we are a district where we speak many languages and proudly so. So the reason for this cut is because they are one of the uh, departments, one of the central departments that is giving up a position. Uh, the person who held the position of world language coordinator has resigned and has left the district. So that position is being, is one of the cuts that we are making. And the duties of that person um, are being assigned to a new position in our district-wide regular day, which does all of the professional development for all of the teachers. So that, the new position is a grade six through 12 curriculum director. And the expectation is that the person taking that position will incorporate the duties of the multilingual, the world language coordinator position and incorporate the strategies that the multilingual department uses with its own teaching uh, and teachers for professional development. So that all teachers in the district will have access to them because those are who our students are. So in a very small department, uh, a cut, a position loss reflects as a very large percentage cut. The department itself is the, that is the staff that are centrally budgeted. And so there are multilingual teachers at the schools that are assigned to the schools. But this reflects the central office budget for multilingual learners. So it is down a position, which was an administrator position, and that is why the cut looks so large, because it was a small central department to begin with.
Can I just also add that one thing that's, we should point out where we've uh, seen a major increase in expenses is translation and interpretation, which we feel very positively about, but we now have a full-time person and people know that she's there. So they're requesting, which is a good thing, right? But we've also blown through our budget this year, good reason. And we, and we have so many more families who are um, multilingual. But I, I, I do appreciate the fact that our staff knows that there's a responsibility to make sure that families get information in their native language. And so we have a person coordinating all that. I would put up our system against any school district in the state. Because uh, and, and the school committee has seen it, that we have a dashboard of how many requests there are, for what reasons, what languages, which schools are requesting. And we've seen a significant increase. We also had to right-size the budget for that this year, if you're talking about multilingual learners and families. I, I forget, I mean, you would know the number of how mu-, how much it's increased in the last, um, our translation interpretation.
Yeah, we um, in this fiscal year had budgeted $40,000 for translations. We currently have unpaid bills of $70,000, so we have long since spent our $40,000. We're planning, uh, we've budgeted over $100,000 to increase those services. They, those actually aren't in the multilingual department either, they're in the um, student and family services department, but.
Okay, I really, I really appreciate you, you, you answer, I think uh, clarify a lot. But is the number growing in, in the multi-language learning students? The department is still a little bit, I think, should be the opposite, which, which will span that department, make sure that we really, really address those needs of those uh, that community which is actually growing, 54% of the entire population is students. So I, I thought that we're gonna see a difference perspective into this. I know that there might be some items in other type, another, another part of the budget, but I mean, how can we explain that into the general population in term of we're growing on one side? But are we diminishing the, the, the resources that we're allocated for?
So the teaching positions are not in that budget, they're at the school level. So we actually have an increase in multilingual teachers uh, in, for next year. But schools, that's a place where schools have traded to have more multilingual, you're right, the numbers are going up. But what you're looking at is the administrative line, which we cut a coordinator for world language. The teachers themselves are in the different school budgets. So um, they're actually, we, it, it wouldn't come out here because they're lumped in with all the other teachers at the respective schools. But in reality, we have added multilingual teachers because we have, for compliance reasons, we have to with the growth in numbers. So if you look at the number of multilingual teachers now, I mean, three years ago versus now, we do have an increase. I can get you those numbers. And, but that, but that wouldn't, that's not gonna appear on the, um, that's not part of that budget that saw a decline. That's at the individual schools because the people are assigned to the different schools.
Councilor Stott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wrote my questions down, so I won't be all over the map, but I have four. I'll start with one that kind of pings off of fellow Councilor Dominguez's questions about the translation services. It made me think of um, the new, perhaps new or moving of the parent information center down to the point. I was wondering if you could explain any budget aspects of that and perhaps the plan?
I might need to turn to the city on that one. Okay.
So is that in partnership with the city?
Yes, in partnership, do you want to ask your next question and then we'll get back to that one?
My other question is around the transportation that you noted, so 1 million increase plus almost an additional 1,800,000 for the homeless population. Is that under the same contract, the NRT contract, so it's a different contract?
So the, the homeless transportation is held by a variety of different vendors. So part of that is through Bay State, which provides the lion's share of students experiencing homelessness who are in Salem, attending Salem public schools. But part of the rise in expenses is if a student is attending Salem public schools but is currently sheltered in another community, we share the cost of getting the student here with the host community. Similarly, we have some students who are sheltering in Boston or in Salem, who are enrolled in Boston public schools. So we share the costs um, with those, with Boston. We have students coming from really all over eastern Massachusetts, and so we have many vendors uh, for our homeless transportation. NRT is mostly not one of them.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then uh, kind of a piggyback of the transportation and chronic absenteeism, one comment that you made that I have thought about often is the students that misses their bus or can't get around. Almost like a skipper, but specifically for students, you know, using one of those NRT buses. My daughter is at Carlton and she uh, was evacuated last minute. And within like five minutes, they got a bus there at the end of the bike path to get all the students to the high school. And I was like, where are the buses all day? So I don't know if that's been, you know, tossed around as an idea or discussed at all.
Yeah, so uh, we, we're trying to, um, this is a, this is gonna be part of our strategic plan is uh, figuring out the trans-, the transportation needs. I really am interested in purchasing more um, nimble multipurpose vans, uh, which can be driven by staff. Because the, we have transportation needs that are to and from school. But then there's a whole, now, there's a whole host of transportation needs during the school day. To and from internships, to and from early college, to, you know, us, the smaller teams going, the debate team, the, the ski team going, you know, going to places. Transporting kids back and forth from Collins to the Salem High. We want to get kids from New Liberty and Salem Prep to go to the CTE programs at Salem High. So we, we, we now have three vans, I think it's three, or two and one coming, sorry, two and one coming. And we, that's, I, I envision that those vans could be driven by someone to, to do exactly what you're saying. We, we haven't been set up to do that in the past, but that is exactly what I'd like to see happen with the vehicles that we do own. Doesn't have to be a big school bus, it could just be one of the multipurpose vans driving to pick up kids in the city.
Actually, before we leave transportation, um, our, our, our special education transportation budget for next year is um, 1.1 million dollars for out of district and 576,000 dollars for students in district. So um, that is compared to 1.1 million for regular day and 800,000 for homeless.
Do you want to?
So uh, I'll just preface it by saying the, so the On Point Center is in the Parks and Recreation Capital Projects. And, and I can outline kind of the funding plan. It's in design phase right now, the person who's the project manager is not with the city anymore, so we're kind of going through a process of reassigning that project to keep it on track. But it is a city-funded project in a park that will eventually be um, maintained and house a, a school department office. So a partnership project, a little complicated, uh, but one that we're, we're continuing to advance. I'll let Anna speak to the funding.
Thank you, and um, this is uh, as the mayor noted, um, in the capital plan for another department. The funding that is currently identified in the capital plan uh, for FY24 is around, so the, the project as we understood it, as it was presented at the time, uh, was looking at a, a funding need of around 650,000 dollars. Uh, we identified that we had a little over 54,000 dollars remaining in a CDBG um, allocation, so those funds are available for expenditure. Um, and the remaining gap was just under 400,000 dollars. And so after some analysis, we identified that ARPA may be the best use of funds um, based on the, the intended use for that space. Uh, we also received um, an earmark in the current year for 200,000 dollars uh, from the state. And we've been working um, to spend down that earmark. We're currently planning, I believe, to spend around 75,000 dollars, hopefully by the end of the year, on some architectural drawings. And so uh, the building department was helping us um, work on that. And then we are hoping to roll the rest of that earmark into next year uh, to apply to other work on the project. As the mayor noted, the project manager did depart the city, and so we're a little bit behind, I think, where we had otherwise intended to be. And so we are hoping to get those drawings uh, soon uh, so that we can determine if the, any additional funding might be needed or just how to proceed with next steps um, at this stage and then determine timing for when that project, uh, when the construction can begin.
Thank you, so that's a couple of years off, it sounds like, but an exciting project. Two more questions, one a charter school and one about school resource officers. I don't know which one you want to go. Kind of a big tent question, I'll go for the charter school one. I always hear that charter school funding affects our bottom line revenues, expenses, and I never quite understand why. Is it because the loss of students or, I don't know if you could explain kind of high level how the charter school funding affects?
Yeah, I think Anna, Anna is, you're lucky, we're lucky.
This is a really great question. So for charter schools, um, there are two ways that um, this affects basically the resources that are available to the city's bottom line. There are um, basically the chapter 70 money, and the simplest way to sort of say it is the chapter 70 money sort of follows the student where, um, when they go to the charter school. And so the, when a student, uh, if a Salem student uh, enrolls in a charter school, there is a funding formula that is, that the state has developed that will reimburse the district uh, for the costs that they would have otherwise received for that aid on a step-down basis, I believe it's 100% the first year, 60% the second year, and 40% the third year, I'm pretty sure. After that, it rolls off. And so if we have a student that um, maybe goes to the charter school in middle school and stays all the way through high school, those last couple of years in the charter school, we won't receive any reimbursement for the, for the stated money we would have otherwise received for that student. So what can hap-, so there's, there's that piece. So what we, what occurs is that we get our chapter 70 money in, we then have an assessment that we pay back, that we pay back, uh, which is the money that goes to the charter schools to pay for the education of those students. And then on the other side of the ledger, there's a reimbursement we're getting that's trying to help offset some of that assessment based on where the students are that have enrolled are in the course of their sort of step-down with that formula. This year in particular, uh, it must, we are kind of hitting a point where we must have um, many students that have rolled off the reimbursement formula. And so the amount of money um, that we're, we, we are being reimbursed has decreased. At the same time, our assessment has increased. And what goes into that assessment is also similar uh, to what goes into like the chapter 70 formula. And so our assessment went up at the same time our reimbursement went down. Um, and so the net effect was almost 1.2 million dollars, um, which almost offset all of the chapter 70 increase that we would have otherwise received for this year. I hope, I, I can provide more clarifying because it's a bit complicated to talk about that piece. And it's, it doesn't necessarily mean that there are more students enrolled in charters because we are capped. It just, it just means where they are in that formula at any given year.
Um, and then my last question about the school resource officer, and this is kind of, again, multi-department, sorry. But we just, or I just learned last night um, during the police budget hearing that there is, the one full-time school resource officer is based at the Collins School. And I just um, was curious about the, if you were involved with the decision-making of that at all, of placing them there and how that is working out.
Well, there's one that's placed at Salem High School and one that's placed at Collins. So um, is that maybe you?
So last night we were told there was one full-time at Collins and then one that floats.
Right.
So that they're mostly at the high school, it sounds like.
I mean, the home base is the, the high school. So yeah, I, the chief and I do talk about the assignments, historically that's what's been done. The two largest schools uh, get the, you know, have the resource officers, Collins and Salem High School. I would say both of them do float, I mean, the, the one at Collins ends up going to other schools depending on the need. Also, they, they go to Salem Academy if there's a, if there's a need as well. So um, you know, we, we are, I, we, I am involved in the decision with the chief. I think the one that we have, it's uh, the SRO at Collins, this is his first year there. He's been a good match for the school, he's got the right temperament for working with young students, um, you know, continues to receive training. I, I have to say, I'm, I'm pretty impressed just in general with the mindset around, this isn't a school-to-prison pipeline. There, you know, there is meant to be a relationship with, and a lot of this comes from the chief and his philosophy as well, um, which I appreciate around um, school officers. You know, I've heard, I've gotten positive feedback from the administrators at Collins in terms of that person's uh, interaction with young people outside playing football, out of recess, uh, in, engaging in the kids in a very positive way. I have been in other places where I have been concerned that it, you know, contributes to um, a, a pipeline um, to uh, you know, uh, to criminalize kids, which I, you know, have significant concerns about. I think the chief and I, and you know, there's, I, I've received a lot of questions on both sides of this. I, I was just at a parent event, we're uh, meeting and half of, I, half of the table seemed to be interested in having more police officers in the school. And the other half of the table wanted to see no police officers in the schools. So I do think. So I do think as a community, we have to have more conversations about the role and, and solicit input from stakeholders about, you know, I happen to think that there is a role, but it has to be with very clear guidelines and boundaries because I have seen, not here in Salem, but in previous places where it has contributed to, you know, if kids get involved in a fight, which happens in schools. In every school I've ever been in, in my own education, that doesn't mean that children should end up being arrested, right? And we, I don't see that here in Salem, but those, those lines are ones that we have to make sure we, those are careful lines. And I'm sure Ms. Manning, probably not tonight, could talk about the history of SROs in schools in Salem too.
I was just going to say, you know, just going back to when they first started the program years ago in Salem, there were always two. And for a long time, in fact, it, well, well, up until I get through, which was like 2014, there were two based Collins and high school, but fluid between the two. There wasn't one at Collins and one at the high school. They were, they were both floating. And it was, in Salem, going back, you know, two or three police chiefs, it's, it's always been very far from the prison pipeline. You know, the, the point is not to, you know, punish and catch and whatever, it's to prevent through relationships, but.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you just bring the microphone closer? I'm getting messages that people can't hear you.
But it's also, it's also good to have them around, you know, because they do get to know kids and they know families and they, you know, they would go out and do night rides and, you know, staff could go with them, you know, to relate with families. But, you know, the point always was to be available to all the schools. So all through, from the beginning, the inception of the program in Salem, if an elementary school had an issue going on, whether it was an immediate issue that needed to be solved or an ongoing thing that they needed the school resources help, they always, both of them could float to any school in the system. And then when the charter came on, they added that into it. So the history is floating, but the history is also relationship building as opposed to punitive. But if you need, if you need the help, they're also very right on the spot and handy to get. You know, I mean, go back, Conrad, you would know, I mean, even back to like Peter Baglioni, who wasn't a resource officer, he was a juvenile officer, which is a whole separate position the city used to have. And Peter was like the detective in West Side Story when we did the play, you know? Those kinds of things, you know, all through the years. But I know there's concern, you know, with some parents, but there's a history of, they do belong to all the schools, they're just based at certain schools. So I don't know if that helps.
Thank you. This is all helpful, especially it's something newer to me than I'm learning about. My Carlton student, even she mentioned that they have stopped by recently, the school, community school resource officer. So I do agree that they float around to the different schools. And I think that's good, especially for relationship building and not just showing up when there's a problem or an issue or, I mean, everybody loves Derby, but now it's like, what, what happened that Derby is showing up? So it's good to have them visiting on a relationship basis. I agree with that. Just from my own knowledge, because again, I'm not familiar with them, are they like fully uniformed in the school, these school, with weapons?
They do have weapons, but they have, they wear like a polo shirt that says Salem Police on it. And, but they, and they do have weapons, yeah. The chief and I have gone back and forth. They used to be fully uniformed. Now he has them just wearing a polo shirt when they come to school. But they, they do have their weapons with them, yeah.
Okay. And then my, my last question on this, because I think this might be getting outside the scope of budget, but you mentioned policy and how things have done or what was done in the past or how the program has been run before. Is there anything in policy now about the purpose of the school resource officer?
We have an MOU with the Salem Police that we are required to sign on an annual basis. And that's something we can discuss with the city council, you know, in the future. But I, that, we have a MOU that we sign with Chief Miller and we talk, every year we sit down and talk about the parameters in that MOU. And so we do talk about the different roles. I will say the other place that I, I should, I neglected to mention this, they're incredibly helpful with drills that we, our Alice drills and our, we're now working on reunification, what, what happens if there is a crisis, how do you reunify students with their families? And so they are right now going out to every school to, to practice with the schools. So they do go onsite for, for those, for the drills when we do them, evacuation drills, Alice drills. And then obviously if a situation happens, they are the first deployed to support, you know, in, in schools. But I, you know, I, I do think it's probably a good conversation for a future school committee, city council joint meeting to talk about SROs because they're not in my, our purview. And actually, in this case, the city pays for the SROs in the schools. And so it is one of those joint partnership, you know, areas that I do think that's probably a good conversation between the school committee and the city council in the future.
Great, thank you. Perhaps, perhaps that'll be one of those items that can come up in the state of the schools conversation. I, I, I'm going to jump out of order a little bit. Counselor Watson felt has their hand raised. I know there is some time constraints related to travel, so I want to make sure they can get into the conversation. Counselor Watson felt, I think you're already a panelist and should be able to unmute yourself.
I support within schools as well as training teachers to manage behavioral, disordered behavior.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. We didn't hear the beginning of your sentence because you were muted. If you could just start at the beginning.
Oh, no, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now. We can hear you now.
Okay, good. Sorry about that. I was just going to say, I have questions around how the priority to support students' mental health as well as support teachers and train them to handle disorderly behavior in classrooms shows up in this year's budget, particularly around the areas of the number one priority being staff development and training as it reconciles with the 6% of non-union staff focused on, sorry about the noise in the background if you can hear that, focused on the mental health and counseling services in, in schools. I know it's mental health concerns and disorderly behavior in classrooms and the ability to manage those things and recognize those things and, and support students that are having issues in real time has been a priority of Dr. Sikes and his teams in the past. And I would just love to better understand how that shows up in this year's budget. Thanks.
Yeah, that's a great question. And, you know, I'm happy, counselor, to talk to you about going more in depth at any point about that. But two quick responses to that. The first is, so we've invested heavily in the telehealth, mental health with Cartwheel. And actually, I was on a call this morning. We are, we're going to, we're spending 70,000, which is being matched by a grant for a total of 140,000 for the, the telemental health. We had 133 family or students utilize the telemental health since we launched it in January. And we are going to increase to over, I think it's about 250 seats or places for students for the next school year, which would be for a full school year with our partner. We've, we've had a very positive experience with them. They have counselors who speak multiple languages. It can be done outside of school, at home, and the response, I think I saw the survey results are 90% satisfaction from families. So this budget does reflect that, you know, that, that, the money that we've allocated, we're going to continue to do that. I do worry about continuing it beyond, I think the grant will run out at the end of next year as well for the 70,000. So it becomes 140,000 that we have to account for. But that's, so that's been a significant enhancement to our mental health offerings. To your second question, we are investing in de-escalation training for every teacher to start the school year, this upcoming school year. We use, we have a partnership with Safety Care and, and are, every one of our staff will get the de-escalation portion of it. There's a restraint portion of it, which is only used for extreme situations, but the de-escalation portion of how teachers manage challenging behavior or, you know, dysregulation from students, that is a, I'm not sure that it's an elevated cost because we have that partnership already, but that is a commitment we're making to start, for the upcoming school year. And it is also a major part of our new teacher induction program for new staff that we hire. So I, I hope that answers, and I can go in depth later on with you, counselor, because I think you ask, I mean, that's a, gotta be a keen focus of ours moving forward.
Thanks, I appreciate that. I do have two follow-up questions just with regards to the budget. So, well, actually, one is not with regards to the budget. I guess.
I think, I think school committee member Manning is going to add.
I just wanted to add to the.
Oh, please.
To the teaching and learning question. I mean, the other piece to remember is that although there are specific curricula for different grade levels on social emotional, excuse me, learning, the, the majority of the impact and the effectiveness of those depends on how much those topics are also integrated into all of the curriculum areas. You don't take a period of a day and, and teach a child social emotional learning and say, okay, now it's time for that. That all has to be integrated into everything. And that whole department, that whole area is under the Department of Teaching and Learning, which is under Kate Carboni, who's the other assistant superintendent in charge of all the curriculum. So it's an, it's an infused area beyond just being specifically taught. Because those, those kinds of things really need to be taught in real life situations. Set the classroom. Thanks.
I would agree with that. I think my specific question with regards to de-escalation training for all of current teachers, is that mandatory training this summer or is that an optional part of their professional development?
No, it'll be a part of the back to school training, which every teacher is required to participate because it's our professional days before school starts.
Terrific, thank you. And then with regard to the telehealth support that you've already explained a little bit about, can you speak to, is that available to grade school families as well through, through 12th grade?
Third through 12th grade.
And are you, of the numbers that you, that you explained earlier today, are you seeing those actually being leveraged by families of middle schoolers and grade schoolers or only high school, predominantly high school families?
You know, it's interesting, we, they, I only know this because I had all this data shared with me today. It was, it was perfectly broken down by the different grade spans between third and 12th. We thought it was going to be mostly high school, but it actually was pretty balanced. And they do take every kind of insurance, they will work with, they, part of the partnership is that it, it helps deal, it will offset, it will support students that don't have insurance or have mass health. And then they work off of the insurance for people, for those that are insured. So it, it really, any family can, can take advantage of it if they are referred, they have to be referred by one of our City Connects coordinators.
That was my next question. I think, I think a lot of the time the issue lies in the moment, right? Which is to what school committee, Manning, member Manning mentioned. And I think my concern or my question is how are students getting connected with this program, especially at younger ages? Is it through direct contact with families or is there real time support being offered in the moment?
Well, there's real time support by the counselors we do have in the schools. And I have, we have the best ratio I've ever seen in any public school in Massachusetts. But they are getting connected for the longer term connection to telemental health. They're getting that connection through the City Connects coordinators at the school. Parents reach out to them or they reach out to families and that's where the connections are made. The referrals have been flying fast since, since January. And so the connections are being made and these are students that weren't necessarily receiving services. And like you said, it could be, you know, there's different reasons why in the moment kids, there could be stress at home, there can be a bullying issue at school, there can be, you know, a divorce, you know, that impacts a child. And so these services are available for students for, you know, in the moment who need to access those services quickly. The turnaround is one to two days.
Okay, and then last question, I promise.
Sure, no.
Is there any, any part of this budget invested in programming to teach students how to manage their own behavior and mental health concerns within the classroom day to day?
I wouldn't say directly. We are, there is investments that we continue to make around restorative practices and restorative learning for students. And so there is also resources around student, you know, advocacy and voice. I'm not sure directly to your question that there is resources around teaching them directly, but I mean, you're talking about something like mindfulness.
Well, yeah, and regulating their own behaviors.
Yeah, regulating.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I think the expectation is that our educators are trained to be able to teach kids directly how to do that. But to your point, I, I do think that that could, we could be doing a better job of that as a system.
Yeah, I, I would be happy to support funding for programs like that.
I think.
Thank you very much.
I just want, I wanted to add again, I think there is some degree of that going on in some of the social emotional curriculum that are, depending on the grade level, you know, more or less intense. But I think that that is where you would find some of that taking place, but not under the name maybe of self-regulation. I think that you wouldn't see it in the budget, you know, those kinds of lines, but you would have that terminology used with some of the children, depending on the age and the grade level. And the, the, the emphasis on learning those skills without delineating them like as maybe you're looking for in a budget situation. I think those are imbued in the curriculum that we've adopted as a system.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a great day, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Marsillo.
Thank you, Chair. Pre-K, a couple of questions. Are you following the students from pre-K into the elementary level to kind of assess how they're doing as compared to the kids that didn't go through the pre-K?
Yeah, we, we're going to do a presentation for the school committee at some point before the end of the summer on that. The first cohort right now is in kindergarten because we just started two years ago. And so we are following it. We have internal assessment data and so we are going to do a presentation on that. The early data is very positive. It's, I mean, not surprisingly, you know, because we're not just, it's a mixed delivery model, so it's not only the, I should, I gotta always remember that it's not just about the programs we expanded, but we're investing in our community partners as well with some of this S R funding that we've received. So we're, some of our, our coach works, we have two coaches that not only work with the Salem Public School classes, they work with the YMCA, they work with Salem Community Childcare because they're part of, they're partners of ours. So we would consider all of that being an impact and investment in early childhood because we, those are the kids that are coming to us anyway, whether they're in Salem Public Schools classes or in the community partner classes that we've invested in.
That's great. How, what's the plan for how long you're going to be following them, like?
Well, I think we should be following them all through. I mean, this is a case study in the, in the, in the value of pre-K. So if we want to, if we want to make a case for why we need funding, I think we do, we have to follow them. So we will, I mean, I would say we don't have, we shouldn't have a choice, we need to follow them.
Okay. Good. I think that there's about just under 200 students in the pre-K in Salem. So how many are there in the other programs?
I don't have the exact numbers. Probably double that, I mean.
So we're talking maybe 400 students?
Yeah, four to 500 students total, yeah.
In pre-K?
I mean, there's more, but the, but in the, in the programs that we're directly investing in, yeah, that's probably, it's about 500 kids, yeah.
And how many students in kindergarten?
And remember, that's three and four-year-olds. So somebody, yeah, so we, our kindergarten classes are around 220 right now.
Okay. That's pretty good. Okay. So would you say that most kids coming into the school system are getting a pre-K program?
Yeah, I would, I think it's more like 50 to 60%. I think there's still a number of students who never attend school before they come to kindergarten and there are some that are in home daycare programs. And then there's others that just move in to the city. So, I mean, we're, we're getting close to a stronger saturation. And the teachers, you know, have. And the teachers, you know, have anecdotal told me, but the data also shows it as well that, that kids are coming, that are coming out of our programs are, I mean, our early, our early data is really promising. Obviously, the kids that we have in the other elementary and middle school grades have all been impacted by the pandemic. But this new group of kids last year, and not that they weren't impacted, but they certainly, their schooling didn't get interrupted in the same way.
Do we have the capacity to expand the number of students in pre-K?
We do, I mean, that, I mean, my, my dream was to house them all in the Salem Public Schools, but that's not a very popular thing with community partners who also feel committed, you know, who are committed to, and they're, you know, staples in the community. So I sort of was told to relax a little bit on that. We do have the room in, in our schools, for sure. And if you, some of you know that Pathways, which is a head start program, runs out of horsemen. We don't invest in that, they're not one of our grantees, or we don't invest in them. But they're in our schools, so we give them space. That's a whole nother group of students who, you know, who end up coming to the Salem Public Schools as well. But there is room, yeah.
Okay, so at the state level?
Yes.
The hope is that there's funding for pre-K?
Yep.
Where does that stand?
I've been, I've been trying, I've been at this for too, too long, even in my prior district. You know, I, I've had a lot of conversations with Lieutenant Governor Driscoll about this. I don't have a good update of where we stand right now. There seems to be, there was, I was very hopeful that the, you know, the federal conversation around childcare for, you know, children under five was moving along. It doesn't, I don't, I don't have a recent update on this. I do know that there, you know, there's an appetite on the part of this, you know, the Healy administration to, to do this work. But the communities that have been able to do it thus far have had, like Cambridge has just flipped to all, has, have open seats for all pre-K students in the district, I think for next year. We're one of the few, I think Springfield's done it, but they've been able to find the money, you know, in, you know, there are wealthier cities, I mean, Cambridge is a wealthier city. They've been able to do that. There's just not many communities that have the funding to do that. We, I think we would need in support from the state to do it. So I don't have a good answer on where, where we stand. And I think that's something we've got to roll our sleeves up again to try to figure out how to make it happen here.
So for the, for the money that you've given to the other programs, the Y program, for instance, is that to expand the program? Because they always had a preschool program, didn't they?
Not to expand, it's, it's to be able to support their, them with increasing teacher pay because they pay their teachers a lot less, Salem Public School teachers get paid more. It's also been to invest in their curriculum support. We have coaches that are part of their responsibilities to work with those programs as well, professional development materials, so that they're up to the same standard as, you know, higher standard, because those programs are not well-funded, you know, at all. Especially ones that, you know, that many students are on vouchers. So that's how we've used the funding. We also have a state grant on top of it that, it's called a CPPI grant that also supports some of the investment on top of what the school system is. I am hopeful that there's going to be a funding stream connected to some of that grant funding that we've, we've already, you know, received. But, you know, yeah, I don't have a good answer right now. I hope to be able to come back to you. I need to come back to you in a year with a better answer.
Well, I hope the state can find some money in the budget for it. The homeless transportation, so if I understood correctly, we are going to get reimbursed for the state aid for those students?
We're going to get reimbursed for some of, so homeless transportation in general, the city, for, in a normal year, homeless kids come in and out of districts. The city does get reimbursed for homeless transportation during the course of the year, just in general. Not always 100%, it's some percentage of the, what, what we budget. It's a moving target, though, because you never know how many kids are coming in. And as Elizabeth said, there's also kids who come to, who reside in Salem, but that go to schools in other districts, and we end up having to cost share. We can never predict what that number is. The students that were moved by the state specifically to the Salem State housing, to housing, we are going to get a reimbursement for those children. It is, it can be used, other districts didn't have like the, the staffing, they didn't, you know, in our, in our case, we're going to use the funding for transportation, even though our policy says we don't necessarily have to transport those kids because they live within, they technically live within the distance that we don't have to provide transportation. The fact is, they're homeless families living in a very hard place to get to school, right? The schools that they go to. So we have made the decision as a community, or as a school district with the support of the School Committee, to transport those students. The reimbursement that we're going to get for specifically those, what is it, 50 students? We are going to put all towards the transportation costs because we don't, we have room in our schools, we don't need to hire more staff based on our enrollment. We don't need the translation and interpretation support because we have that. We have, most of it, we have. And so we're choosing to use that to, for transportation. So we are getting reimbursed for this fiscal year and for the next fiscal year because they weren't technically here on October 1, so they did not count for our enrollment. And so we are getting reimbursed for, for the, this current, we haven't received the check yet, but it's coming, it's in the mail is what we're told.
It's in the mail. Okay. So transportation is always one of those things that drives me crazy. And you mentioned something about neighborhood schools, which, yeah. Is there any work being done to study that?
I, I think we look at the, the new building project as an opportunity to really look at that conversation. The master facilities program, the master facilities plan did push us to think about, one of the recommendations was to have, begin having conversations about that. I do think that, I don't want to speak for the School Committee, but there are number of members of the School Committee that have intimated that they want to have those conversations as part of this, of the high school plan. Whatever the high school plan ends up being in terms of the configuration, it's probably the opportune time to talk about the whole system. When you make monument, a change like that, you might as well do, if you're going to make a change, you might as well look at everything. And so I do think it's, my personal opinion is it's something we need to look, look at, and I know committee members want to dive into that. You know, we're, we're by far, we're one of the few districts in the state that has choice. There are pros and cons to it. And there are many, I hear families on both sides, both sides of it. I know it's a sensitive topic, but I think it's one that we, we shouldn't be afraid to discuss because there are trade-offs.
Agreed. I think.
And transportation is definitely one.
Yeah.
The amount we spend on transportation for such a small city is, is, is high.
And, and, you know, the health, the health things that go along with it, kids sitting on a bus for 45 minutes to get to school is ridiculous when they could be walking outside, getting fresh air and coming to school, ready to learn. Yeah, I just, I have a lot of feelings about that.
Yeah, and I'd love to, I'm excited to have those conversations. Now, now that we know who the next mayor is, you know, I look.
We can start having conversations.
Yeah. Not the next mayor, the current mayor, that's right, thank you.
And then finally, out-of-district placements into Salem, especially for the high school. Are we seeing that?
So you mean choice?
School choice.
Yeah, we have about 50 students that choice in every year. We opened it up a couple of years ago, two years ago, to the whole district. It's not just Salem High, we, we now have choice, we have 15 seats available at every grade level. And we have about 50 students total that choice in. And that, as, I think it's, it amounts to about a half a million dollars every year that comes in in school choice. We're actually about net, almost net the same, like the number of kids leaving for choice. Remember, choice is school cho, that's school choice out of Salem. And that's different than out-of-district placement. I know there's all these terms. And then school and kids coming in, it's about the same. It's about the same number.
Are you seeing any, any demand for more placements at the high school now that we've got this?
Well, it's interesting, it's interesting you bring that up because Beverly has approached us about coming to, having some of their students use the CTE programs at Salem High School in the, if, what we call after dark. We used to send those kids to Essex, Essex used to have a program. So Beverly, who has no CTE programs, would send their kids there. I think they're interested in exploring the relationship with us because, yeah, I don't want to get into the politics of what that was, but, but they're interested in accessing some of the places we have openings. And I think our programs now sell themselves better than they ever have. So we had a team from Beverly over just last week looking at the programs, and they have about 20 or so students that are interested in coming for a part of their day to, to the CTE program. So that would be an op, we would receive chapter $74, which are vocational dollars from Beverly if that ends up happening. So I'm not even sure I was supposed to talk about that all publicly, but here we are. I mean, it's too late about it, but, but that's the kind of, we're, we're having, and we're also talking to PBD because PBD has some CTE programs, but we offer, we offer things that they don't, and they offer things that we don't. So for instance, like cosmetology is a very popular one. We don't offer cos, cosmetology, but PBD does. I mean, I love the idea that our kids could actually have choices to be able to go to programs, you know, in the, in the area, in the area where they're, you know, if they're interested in it, and we have relationships with our partners. So that's an opportunity, you know, and I think more students are just, I, I have a lot of kids that tell me, I didn't even know that you had CTE programs at the high school. So some of that, as, as it's becoming more publicized, I think more, you know, students are, you know, choosing, I hope more students are choosing to come to Salem High because of that.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to quickly note that Counselor Watson felt has exited the meeting remotely. Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, Chair McLean. I first want to start by thanking all of, both of you, the School Committee and your educators, the staff, for the incredible work that you do. It's been extremely hard work, especially over the last few years. It does not go unnoticed, and it is greatly appreciated, and thank you. So I want to take that opportunity to say that. And thanks for all the great questions, most of my questions have been answered. But also just to, to that point, your focus on a mental health, I loved it when, you know, reading about the telehealth that was going to start several months ago. I love the focus on non-conventional learning, New Liberty. I went to the graduation of the CTE students and the enthusiasm that they had for, you know, their, their instructors and their teachers. They were just cheering them on. I, I don't remember the kind of enthusiasm when I was in school. So it's, it's, I was not a, I was a non-conventional learner, and those programs, if something like that would have been great for me, so I really appreciate that. Also appreciate one of your priorities, you know, building a diverse workforce. And you already partially answered that when you said you have added many multi-language teachers. So thank you for that. I was just wondering where you feel you are with that? If you think you've, you feel you've gotten that to where you want it? Or if it's been challenging, you know, to diversify the workforce? And then I had one other question after that.
Sure, no, it's super challenging.
Yeah.
And I'm, I think we're committed to, I think the best way, in my opinion, that you can do that now is by investing in your own, your own people. Your, so paraprofessionals to becoming teachers. The good news is there's a lot more flexibilities in certification than there's ever been before. And this is an opportunity to elevate people who are homegrown Salem folks, who are working in our schools, who are really committed to, to our community. They work as paraprofessionals. We've been able to elevate some of them in the last year. And I do think that that's the place to look. And then I really believe our students are, we, we have an early education program at Salem High School as part of a pathway, and we haven't really formalized the return back to the Salem Public Schools to become teachers. And I really, that's an area that I really want to focus on because I think you've got a better chance of, everybody's trying to recruit a more diverse workforce. But where we stand, the chance is to invest in the people that live in this community who are going to be here, right? And who send their kids to our schools, who are, you know, have graduated from our schools. That's, I think that's the place that we, that's where I see how we can achieve success. I think one of the places we've struggled is some of the, we're not as diverse in the central administration, the school building leadership, and I do think that's a problem. I, we've struggled to get diverse candidates and, you know, to, for us to recruit diverse candidates to assume school leadership positions. And so what I'm doing, trying to do right now is we're investing in building the pipeline from within. So I've got two of our leaders of, like budding leaders of color in a program at BC for school leadership, because I'm trying to build the pipeline of future principals that are diverse. And when you have a more diverse leadership team, principals, central office staff, you know, then I do think you start creating a culture, you start, you can start hiring a more diverse workforce. Teachers will want to come work when there's a more diverse leadership across the system. So we, and now we have a DEI, you know, role similar to the city. Unfortunately, that person is becoming a superintendent in another district, but Dr. Carmon is going to Somerville, which is great for Somerville, but is a loss for us. But we have that role, and so, you know, we're working very closely with Rahim at the city. But that is a challenge, but it's, it's critical. And I see the difference it makes with kids. I mean, it really, it, especially at the middle and high school level, it makes a huge difference when kids see educators who look like themselves and are from the, you know, are from the community. Oh, that's right, we, thank you, thank you. We, we have an Inspire Fellow Program with Salem State for staff of color. And we, we, we had three, three staff members who signed contracts early to become teachers in the Salem Public Schools, and they will become teachers next, they will be teachers next year in our school system. So Salem State is working with us on also creating a pipeline. Most of those young people, though, are Salem Public School grads, too. So back to the point that, that our, you know, our own is who we have to invest in.
Yeah, thank you, that, that's terrific, and that we're already so invested in our Salem communities. So that's really terrific information, thank you. And also regarding your unhoused of students, you had a number of, you know, just 145 last month, March, and then 208 this March. And one of the questions I have, but I think you quickly answered, was how many are from the unhoused folks up at Salem State? But I think you said it was about 50.
Fifty, yep.
Yes, and just, just for my own, to have a better understanding myself of the challenges and the scope of homelessness in Salem. Is that number of students, I assume that doesn't include their siblings and their, and their family members? And do you find them more at the higher grades? Or just if you, if you have any, you know, quick, you know, I know it's anything involved, like this is a long conversation, but if you had anything else to offer about that?
So the number includes all children who are in the school? So some of them, that number may be siblings. There's a lot of families who are doubled up, you know, living together. You know, we have seen, you know, there's a lot of families that bounce back and forth from Lynn, PBD, and Salem, sometimes from Lawrence. And so we do see quite a bit, and it really ranges of, you know, all ages. It's hard to say that there's any one particular, you know, group. I mean, I think that's where our City Connects coordinators are really helpful because they do support families with the wraparound services, food, they can help with housing. You know, I, I think we do a pretty good job in supporting the families. Transportation is tricky for them. I, I would like to do more, you know, work with some of the shelters in the area. I, you know, in terms of like, I would love to, this is actually one of my goals for next year is to start a attendance coalition that includes hopefully a city counselor, but community organizations, shelter, police, fire, just because I think attendance is a community issue, it's community partners. And so, you know, I, I don't, I, I don't have all, that's the best I can give you on that. I think our schools do a really good job, though, and there is, one thing about Salem, that's why we're really not phased by the students that came in, in large numbers because our schools are just used to a lot of kids coming in and out, and their mindsets are right, not, not perfect, but generally very accepting and welcoming and speaks to the values of the city, you know. And I think for this, I've been impressed with how the schools have adapted and, you know, these families. And the feedback, I met with some of the families at Salem State, I had a chance to go over and speak to the families, and their, their experiences have been very positive. I mean, it's not easy, and they had some good input, but it was, generally, I think they feel like the schools have received them very well. And I think that is something we do well as a system.
Thank you. I really, it's, it's great to hear that they felt welcome, and thank you for all those efforts. And I also want to say thank you for providing transportation when, you know, technically you did not have to with where.
Well, I appreciate the school, the school committee's been very supportive.
Yeah, so I really appreciate that they're getting transportation. Thank you for that.
Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Chair McLean. Really proud of our public schools. I think they, in many ways differentiate themselves from other districts. Before the meeting, we talked briefly about an educational program around substance opiates. You know, Mary and I served on a task force together. And hopefully, that's something that can be an investment at the school level. I wanted to say that I, I can't think of anything that's more exciting than the expansion of the CTE program. Having come from the trade industry, I'm blown away at the, the quality and the energy of the staff and, and the excitement that the students have, that we're going to have programs in clean energy and marine. I really, you know, again, will differentiate us. I attended the Revere Salem Unified Sports Track Meet. You were there, obviously. And, and Mary and I sat at a couple of banquets. And I'm just going to say that I've never seen a level of sportsmanship like the athletes in the Unified Sports Program. And if the Bruins and the Celtics had the same commitment to each other, they'd still be playing. And now I'm going to get to something that troubles me. My opinion is there's no reason that our schools should be experiencing a utility increase burden the way they are. I'm going to give a couple of examples. When Jenna Ide was, you know, with the city, there was a conversion at the Salerno, which was the most highly intensive utility user in the city. And through installation of heat pumps, there's been a big difference. That concept should be, you know, brought to other schools. I know there's a couple of schools that don't have air conditioning and, or one school, yeah, which could, because they have 990 solar panels on the roof. And I do want to give an example. The school solar program on the Witchcraft Heights and the Bentley School, I came up with an idea. And Jeff Ely, who was, you know, before your time was the sustainability energy planner at the time, presented to our broker, Peregrin, who I don't think is a competent broker. And they said it was impossible. Okay? And even though the incentives don't exist today, and we did basically inherit a donation through the legal agreements that Footprint had, but we own $1.7 million of solar panels, and we own 100% of the electricity. So 1.7 million in, in equipment produces somewhere between $400,000 and $600,000 of electricity a year. That's a pretty outstanding return on investment. That's electricity that we don't pay for, that we're not concerned about, you know, increased costs that may or may not be valid. In addition to that, we are in the process, we're several years into it, of receiving $100,000 a year approximately in revenue that's tax-free to the city. So over 10 years, a million dollars. That money goes directly to the schools. So that's a million dollars over 10 years that we're realizing. These solar projects on the Collins and the Salton Stall are really a poor model. It's a power purchase agreement. We get a discount. There's no reason that a city like Salem should be doing what every other city is doing and just getting a discount. There are creative opportunities that we could be realizing where we could appreciably not only diminish the increase in electric rates, which we have no control over, but we can, we can have full control over that. So I'm just offering that I think that, that that was very troubling to see that increase. I, I feel like some of the decisions that are made over the last couple of years were made, and they look nice. I took pictures of the solar panels outside the Salton Stall, but I don't feel it benefits the city as much as it benefits the installer and the companies that installed them. Salem State, for example, has a little bit different model. I don't think it's as good as what I would propose. And I'm not saying that everything is possible, but it may be probable. So I do feel like energy costs are not only good because we can train students. The high school, for example, the roof, where we were going to put the solar panels, and Mary knows about this, when they redid the roof, they didn't make it solar ready. We could have put all the panels that are on Witchcraft Heights and Bentley School on the high school. That's how much real estate is there. So although I'm concerned, I do think that we have an opportunity. And this could play into the CTE program, because, you know, there is an opportunity for us to be leaders in clean energy. We have the wind terminal coming. And I know Crowley has committed to being involved in the CTE program. But we have lots of clean energy through heat pumps and solar and wind, where we can really be a place that kids can see an opportunity for, you know, making a career where they never could in Salem, better than anywhere else. So, you know, I'm just going to end this by saying, I'm, the, the work I've done in the past in the schools and currently doing, I think we have incredibly energetic and creative teachers and staff. And our students are really reflective of that. Some of them is the, you know, and the council came and spoke at the council about an initiative they had about, you know, safety around the school. And that's very inspiring. And, and those kids wrote a petition and spoke at the council in ways that I, if I spent a year, I couldn't be as eloquent as they were and brave as they were to come and speak, some of them for the first time they ever spoken public. So I just want to thank you and your staff for all the great work you're doing, and really appreciate the direction that the schools have had and are taking. I'm, I think of all the things in Salem, I'm really as proud of our school system as anything else.
Thank you. And we will, we'll probably take you up on your offer to talk a little bit more about some of the energy savings work. That could be a good follow-up, Elizabeth. So, thank you.
Counselor Prozinski.
Thank you, Chair. A couple of questions and a couple of comments. I'll ask the questions first. They're kind of ground balls. We were talking about absenteeism earlier, and you were talking about how that bothers you, that it's at such a high rate. Is there a percentage attached to that of how many of our absenteeism? And, and has it risen historically? Has it been the same in the city that you know of? Or is this something that's, that's a trend?
So, you know, the pandemic has blown a lot of that out for everybody, that the numbers, last year, almost a third of our kids were chronically absent across the district. The numbers have been, and this year, so far, what I, I have a dashboard that updates every day, we're closer to a quarter. So we've made significant improvement just in a year, but still a quarter's too high. And Salem High has historically had very poor chronic absenteeism in the high 30, 30s, even pre-pandemic. I think some of it may be some coding and how data collection issues, but I think directionally, it's still problematic. And so, but I do think we have a new, strong attendance lead director for the district. I think our schools have, have established strong attendance teams. Because listen, if you're not in school, you're not going to, I don't care how good of a student you are, or how great the teaching is, it's not going to make a difference if you're not, you know, you're not present, right? So I, I do, it's, so the trends, I have to say, I came from a district that was in receivership. Salem's chronic absenteeism was worse than Holy Oaks was, right? So I was, I have to say, that's one of the most shocking statistics I saw. But I think we're trending in the right direction, and I would love for this to be a community effort. Like, I'd like this to be something we all wrap our arms around, getting kids to school and be present on time every day. So I'd, you know, that's something I hope to do. You know, again, during the pandemic, it was hard to really gauge what the real, you know, kids were out, they needed to be out. We didn't want sick kids in school. But I've learned, we've learned a lot, I've learned a lot this year. We're headed in the right direction. We got to double down on some of that work. So we'll be reaching out to you to help support some of the effort.
I believe your idea with the home visit program, when Mary was talking earlier about the, I guess, home outreach workers, I think that's a fantastic idea. I think that's, that's a, that's a great way of trying to get to the root. Have you got any idea of how many outreach workers, how that's going to be run? How big, are they going to be full-time? Is it going to be a staff?
So we have, we do have family engagement facilitators at every school. That's something the school committee has supported, you know, prior to my time. And those, their work has been really important, both in terms of building relationships with families, around attendance and getting to school. But the home visiting program, we're actually, Laura Assad, who many of you know, is chairing that work, leading that work for the district, and she's meeting with principals tomorrow. We're going to talk about sort of what they would like to see, how many teachers, it's, it's voluntary, like, you can't force people to do it, but we're going to offer the opportunity for teachers to get trained. You also have to train people. You can't just send people out into people's homes. There's got to be some training. But the, you know, everywhere I've seen it done well, it does make a difference. And I'm sure, you know, Ms. Manning, I'm sure had those initiatives, you know, at her school over time. I think more recently Bentley has been doing it. But historically, Salem has done it. I think it's time to bring that back, especially since now we can't, you know, people are opening their homes back up to welcoming folks in there. So I do think that it's, it's all about relation, it's about engagement and relationships, right? And when that exists, people feel better about their schools. You know, remember, some of our parents had really bad experiences in school, whether that was here in Salem or somewhere else, right? And so we're going to make people feel, kids and families feel really good about their schools.
Thank you. Years ago, when Horace Mann was attached to Salem State University, Salem State University, their teachers, part of the program, provided student, teacher practitioners, I guess you can call it, did they still assist the school system in providing teaching at Horace Mann to offset the costs?
Yeah, so we do.
How big of a, how big of a chunk is that?
We have interns, well, we have interns from Mendocote and Salem State. At Horace Mann, we have the largest number. I think we have, have it five? Is that right? Five. And that model has existed for a while there with, with Salem State and having interns, student teachers.
Okay.
Fellows, we call them, yeah.
Thank you. I, too, was part of the graduation at, for the CTE with some of the other fellow counselors. And it was, it was the, the atmosphere was very electric. Everybody was very much in tune to seeing that crystal ball just get bigger and brighter as it goes on. And I'm glad to hear that Crowley is going to be sponsoring the marine mechanic end of it. I think our port is one of our biggest, brightest parts of our future. And all the work that's involved into making the port successful will also be an employment opportunity. And having people that are educated in that field will help out quite a bit. So I'm excited to hear that. The last thing I just wanted to talk about was something that's maybe more for the mayor's office than for you, but it is part of you, that's the, the new, the new high school. Because there's all kinds of buzz about the new high school. You know, it's, it's funny, because I graduated from the old high school. I watched, I watched the new high school being built, which was in the late 70s. Now it's about 45 years old, and it's already falling apart. Well, actually, it was falling apart from the very beginning. When they, when, 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 when they built it, and I know some of you folks are going to remember this, you know, probably within the first year, they figured out that the roof was leaking horribly, and they had to rip off the roof and put on a new roof, which of course doesn't take, you can't, wasn't built right to take any solar energy panels. Shortly after the roof was, went down the tubes, I guess, the, the windows, all the windows that were, you used to be able to see out of, all of a sudden got all fogged up, and nobody could see out of the windows of the school. Can you imagine the price tag that it cost the city and the taxpayers to replace all the windows in the high school? An enormous cost. Then there were structural failures. I mean, there were parts of the wings of the building were separating from parts of the school. This is a 45-year-old building that we spent a lot of money on. To watch it just fall to pieces is a sin. It really is. What process are we going to use to not replicate that when we build our new place? What, how do we, how do we, how do we, how do we make sure that this, that this doesn't happen again?
Well, I'll just start, maybe the mayor wants to jump in. I mean, I do think there's been a number of advancements in school construction, hopefully since then. I think it's going to come down to selecting a strong project manager, a strong construction team, market, you know, design team in the process. I think there's a lot of discussion that still needs to happen about what, what that is going to look like. I think people are automatically making the assumption it's going to be a new high school on that property. I don't, I really don't know. I think we have to have folks who know a whole lot more about school construction than I do, and, you know, we do internally, to help us think through about what the most cost, you know, cost-effective, but also long-lasting, because you want these buildings to last, you know, more than, you know, what, what Salem High lasted. And, you know, so I think, you know, we're, the mayor and I have been, we have to pick a, we have to select a building committee over the next few weeks to submit to the state. We want to make sure we have the, you know, a diverse group of citizens with different knowledge to help spearhead the process. And, you know, so that we don't replicate that. But I do, I think people are, there is a lot of buzz about it. And I think we just got to pause until we, you know, we're going to do a feasibility study. We're going to really look at the different options. I don't even know if you could build, there's ledge up there. So I don't know what's all going to be possible at that site. It's an exciting opportunity, but I just want to, you know, caution people not to like, just jump to, it's going to be, you know, they've already made their decisions. We're far from it. There's, there's a long road ahead in making, you know, in a thoughtful decision. But it's an awesome opportunity that we certainly don't want to squander.
Don't want to repeat our, our mistakes. We want to learn from them, for sure.
Can I quickly just add to that? You said exactly what I was going to say, as far as the condition of, the standards for school buildings has changed a lot in the last 40 or 50 years. And I think the other component of, of the project is being very forward-thinking in how we're considering this building, you know, the high school project. It's not necessarily only because of the condition of the building, but it's also the nature of the facility. So it's not designed for the CTE program that we all, I think, really appreciate and value, is in a space that poorly serves it. And many of the programs that are growing and that we want to support are in spaces that poorly serve them. It's a building that's not built for 21st century technology needs. It's a building that's not built for 21st century energy needs. And, you know, as terrible as it makes me feel to say this as a parent of, of school-aged children, it's not built for 21st century safety and security needs either. So I think we have an opportunity to not just build a better building from a building standpoint, but build a better school for our community and where we're going to be going in the future. So.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Bradwith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to take a minute to appreciate that Counselor Prozinski referred to the high school as the new high school. And also just want to, just want to thank, thank you for, you know, what you've done for our school system here and your, and your team. I think over the last four years, I've noticed a change, just the way people are talking about our schools. And I think there's a feeling, at least, and I know we have a long way to go, but there's a feeling that we're, we're headed And I think there's a feeling, at least, and I know we have a long way to go, but there's a feeling that we're, we're headed in the right direction, and that we have the, you know, I think that we all share a lot of the values that you talked about on here, so appreciate that. Nationwide, right now, the teacher morale, especially since the pandemic, seems to be low. And that's across the United States, but also even just locally, talking to, you know, friends of mine that live in different communities, the same issues we're dealing with here in Salem, they're dealing with in other places. We talked a little bit about some positions that will be eliminated. And I guess my question is just around, I guess, morale and also turnover. Do we track turnover, is, what metrics do you use to track that? What does that look like? Is that, is that something that we, that we talk about? I didn't see anything in the, in the presentation about that.
Yeah, I mean, it's a part of my goals, and it's, it's actually one of the metrics that we'll be having. The new strategic plan is around retention of teachers. Look, I, I'm married to a teacher too, so I hear, you know, morning, day, night, you know, it is, this is a tough time to be a, a teacher. And I am worried about the profession, we all should be worried about the profession. Especially since there's so many other choices of jobs where you can, you don't have to work in person. And people want the flexibility, young people want the flexibility, not just young people, all people want that, and schools don't offer that. You know, you have to be in person, you're, and when you're on, you are on. Gone are the days, I never wanna hear somebody say, well, teachers have the summer off. When they're at work, they are full-tilt the whole time, and there's nothing like it. I can close my door if I, you know, even though I am in the sixth grade wing, I can close my door and do work, right? That doesn't, that's not true about the life of a teacher, who's on, they, even on their breaks, they're still juggling a lot of different things. So, you know, and I do think the work has gotten more complicated and harder. I mean, kids are coming back dysregulated, parents, I have to say, are a little more on edge in general too. And, you know, that's made it a challenging time. I think we are, we, like many districts like ours, the turnover is real, and the churn is real. I think the, the thing that we have to pay the most attention to, and I, I wrote my dissertation about this, not that I, my dissertation isn't very good, but it was the principal's role in teacher retention. And I never, I guess so, but I never realized how valuable it would be, when I just wanted to get that diploma. All I wanted was that piece of paper. But now I realize, it was, it was all about the principal's role in teacher retention. And I've come to believe that so much of the experience for teachers is the culture and climates that's built by the administration and the leadership in the school. As much as I, my wife always says to me, you don't matter, nobody cares about the superintendent, like, you don't work for the superintendent. You're too far removed from it, but you do feel connected to the leader of your building. And they either create a culture and a climate where you wanna be, and you feel like you belong. And even though it may be really hard work, you're gonna stick around, because you got a, a culture there that's really strong and positive. Where that doesn't exist is where you see the churn. And I would say that's very true about Salem too. Part of the reason why I moved a lot of, some principals around this year, and you saw some movement, is I felt really strongly that we needed to get the right match in the, who the leader was of the school. And, and, you know, I, that, that culture and the vision and the direction is set by who the leader is. And so I think we have to support our, part of the, sort of the domino effect is, there's less people who wanna be principals, right? And people are being thrown into school leadership roles who are not necessarily ready for those positions, right? And that makes it harder conditions for, for teachers to work. And so in a time where less people wanna be educators, we've gotta make sure that the culture and climate in the schools are stronger. So what I do pay, to the metrics, I do pay a lot of attention to these pa, we give annual surveys to teachers. The Panorama Survey, we give it at the beginning and the end of the year. I can see it by school, and I, by teacher and staff at each school. And it is very, very telling about the, if, when the staff is happy, that translates to the kids, and we see better results for kids, right? And so I pay a lot, over my career, I've paid more and more attention to that information about what the health of the school is. And no, not surprisingly, you're gonna see more turnover in schools where that, the survey results. One of the questions is, how likely are you to recommend this school to a colleague or to a friend, right? That data point is really powerful, and tells me a lot about what the conditions are in the school. So I don't know if that, that answers your question exactly, but, you know, I, I, it's something we, we have to pay more attention to, about like the, the well-being of the adults in the school, you know, has to be stronger. And not surprisingly, where, like I said, like interestingly, New Liberty has almost always the highest culture. And it's, it is, they have some of the most challenged, challenging students who have not had success in school. But what makes it such a successful school is the adults are all bonded together around the vision and mission of the school.
Thank you, and I think that, I appreciate that about the, taking care of the adults in the school, because I think that the, the experience of the kids has, is impacted hugely by the, by the, the adults that are teaching them. And it's also disruptive, I mean, it just, this turnover is disruptive to students and, and seen across all schools.
Absolutely.
And it's expensive, and it's, so it's disruptive and it's expensive across, in, in any business, not just, not just teachers, in any workplace. It is something that is, that's difficult to deal with. So I'm glad to know that you're teaching, that you're tracking that, would love to see that, that data, maybe in future years on the, in these budgets, because I think it is something we should be looking at. Counselor Marcella talked about neighborhood schools a little bit, I just wanted to add, that, that is a, as a parent at pickup and drop-off, that's a, that's a topic that has gained a lot of steam over the last year of just, parents assuming that we're moving to a neighborhood school model, and then wondering what that means for our school, specifically a school like, you know, I'm, I'm a parent at Saltonstall, so that's, we feel like, at some of these schools, you feel like you're sort of frozen in time a little bit until we figure out what we're moving on to. So I would encourage, you know, I'm, I'm sure this is something we're looking at, but to, to sort of move toward, if that's the goal, then we move towards that goal, and we communicate that to parents, so we know what, what, what direction we're headed. I do think that would be something that would be appreciated. My question around that, though, is I think, I assume that the, the concern is around diversity. Is it something that we have done a study on to know what, I don't know off the top of my head what that would do to the diversity in our, in our individual schools, and the mix there? Is that a study that we've talked about commissioning, or is that something that we can?
Yeah, the, we did a lot, the heat map that was developed, we can, we can cut it different ways based on some of the data we collected as part of the master facilities, facilities plan. We, we can get, we have that data as a district. And so we haven't really gotten deeply into it yet. I mean, I think this is, I, I, I really do think this is a school committee conversation around the school, the school choice. I do think, yeah, the worry is about, you know, we have pretty integrated schools right now, which I'm really proud, I mean, Salem should be really proud of. I mean, the Salem Public Schools looks like the state of Massachusetts, and most of the schools, you know, do fit that balance. We got two, a little bit, two outliers, Carlton's a little bit of an outlier, and Bentley is an outlier as well. And so we're working on that, but I think generally, that's something that you all should be proud of, that, that, that the schools do reflect. You know, kids are being educated in what, what the world really looks like, which is something that is, I think, very special about Salem. So yes, I think that's something we have to pay attention to. The other thing about Salem that, I mean, you all know better than me, the schools are in like very odd places. You know, Carlton and Bentley are right next to one, you know, one another. They're not really like in a neighborhood per se, there's not a ton of homes, which is a little different. And maybe that's one of the reasons why choice existed in, in Salem. But, so there's a lot that would have to be looked at. They're not exactly in the most ideal locations for where the, the majority of our families live downtown, they live near Saltonstall. I mean, the number of kids that could go to Saltonstall, you know, and wanna be there because it's close to their home, you know, exceeds what the capacity is there right now. I mean, we really almost need, would need another building that's close, because it's, I, I'm, what, Ms. Manning, I just had this conversation, to walk from that area to Bentley is not exactly an easy walk, right?
I mean, I'm biting my tongue on the hole.
Okay, alright.
You know, A, the people who live in the homes around Carlton probably think they got homes.
Right.
There are homes around.
There are some, yeah.
But the Bentley Carlton, I mean, they're not close if you were kid walking.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a very complicated, so I mean, I think it was tricky, you know, you could steer.
And, and the people who live here should be leading this discussion more than, but I think it's an important discussion for all of us to have, so.
I agree, I think, I, I, I hope we head in that direction, because I think that the, the, the transportation to school should be more than just buses and cars. My kids have tried to be biking and walking to school more this year, and I hope that at some point, we've seen this in the council chamber a little bit, kids advocating for safe ways to get to school. I think that's a, sometimes a big missing piece of the conversation, where we argue about pedestrians and, and cars, when we get a lot of kids that just need to get to and from school, and if they could do that safely, that would be a huge, that would be a huge relief on the traffic around Salem, because it, it, it's outrageous around some of the schools sometimes, at pickup and drop-off times.
Yep.
On that same track, this, this, we talked briefly about the school location, just to plug for whatever we pick for a, a high school location at some point in the future, I hope that we're working with either the state of Massachusetts or the city to ensure that we have ways for kids to get there that are safe, not on a bus, not on, not, not in a car. I think that the, the location of the high school, there's been some progress over the years, but still, I wouldn't, I would not let my kids ride down Highland Avenue to get to that, to that school. And then just the last question, D1, is he, how, how is he paid for? Is it a grant, and is it something, I love, I love the idea of the, the program, I think it's great, and I hope we can continue that, I just wonder how that, that fund.
That was paid for a grant that we, a grant, and then I think we've also matched some of the funds as well. I have a meeting with Dee, I think next week, to talk about what the future holds, in that it's, it's really been a transformative experience. And honestly, like, this is an example, when you have adults working with kids who, kid, you know, kids are connected to. We just start, we just hired a dance instructor for Collins, who's a former Salem High student, he just started, I think, this week, to just add more, to create more engagement. Specialists are a tough time for kids when they are not interested in the specialists. But when, it's just, it's, it's, it really is transformative when you watch people, like musicians, pop, folks that really understand popular, that are part of popular, popular culture, and what they can do for engagement levels with kids. D1 is an absolute celebrity in this school district. He will walk down the hallways, and kids just flock to him. So I, I, I'd love, I, I wanna invite people to see him when he's in front of kids, because you, you saw some of it in this piece that was done. But I'm hoping to continue his work here, because I'm actually more interested in him working with adults than kids. Because I want him to teach adults to do what he does well. Because that's what we, we need to figure out, is how do we get more adults to have those kinds of relationships with kids? He's great with kids, but I can only get him a couple times a year. But when he comes, I want him to be able to work with our staff, so that they can build stronger connections with, you know, with kids. You know, I certainly, you know, I, as my daughter says, nobody wants to talk to you, Dad, you know, so don't talk to the kids in the hallway. She always says it to me, no middle schooler wants to talk to you, Dad.
I will say that.
I don't have it, I guess, but I don't.
I think my son may have been confused as to who you were, but when I said Dr. Zryke, he thought you were Dr. Dre.
Well, I'll take that, whatever house, I mean.
And, and my, and, alright. And, and I, and same thing with Doc, with, with D1, I think it was, even the kids at Saltonstall, I don't know how much, how much he's had, how much experience he's had there, but even the kids at Saltonstall all know who he is. So I think the idea of having an artist in residence, I think, is a great thing for our public schools.
Yep.
But, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, a really robust round of questioning, does anybody wanna go for two? Doesn't seem like it. We're gonna get to the vote and get everybody home, but I, I really wanna thank you for being here. You can tell that you're dealing with a roomful of parents here, in addition to a bunch of counselors, and, and, you know, something that I heard a lot, just to sort of wrap this up, something that I heard a lot over the last, you know, pick a number of five to ten years about Salem, is everybody was having a public conversation about the state of our schools. A lot of times I would hear advocates for the school say, Salem Public Schools have a reputation problem, right? Things are better than they seem, we have a reputation problem, we just need to let people know what is the good things that are going on, and, you know, I think that's true to a degree, but I, I always thought that was a little bit of an undersell. I think leadership really makes a difference, vision really makes a difference, trust really makes a difference. And, and I think, as you were saying, culture really makes a difference. And speaking for myself, I have noticed a clear cultural shift under your leadership since you got here. I think people see a sense of direction, I think people see a sense of where we're trying to go, I think people see a pathway, and I think your accessibility and your leadership is a big part of that. So I'm really grateful to have you here, and I'm really grateful to be able to have this conversation and see your engagement, see your passion, see your preparation. I can tell that you have commanded this information, and I just think that is so, so important for our school system. So I'm really grateful for you being here.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It's a humbling job, so I appreciate you saying that. Nothing that I've learned in the twenty-plus years before this has prepared me for this moment in time, but I just, you know, we just gotta, I, the, the only thing I just responded to that is, we all just need to listen to kids more. We need to listen to what our students tell us, because that's where I learned the most about how to improve our schools. And so I would just urge all of us as adults in this community to talk to kids, because that's where the real answers lie about how to continue to improve their experience. And to, to this moment in time, none of us ever went through what kids are going through right now, and what they see every day, what they experience. So we just have to continue to push ourselves to listen to what they have to say. It's their time, it's their education, not, you know, not ours right now. So that's the, you know, I appreciate you saying that. But, yeah, I, I, I just would ask all of us as leaders to listen to the voices of kids.
Excellent advice. Counselor Stott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I also wanted to make a comment, because I kinda jumped right into my questions. So I wanted to also say my thank yous for the, to the public school and to Dr. Zryke. Today was actually my daughter's transition meeting at Carlton School. So her fifth grade transition meeting, which I don't know if you're familiar with this at Carlton School, but each time they go up to the next level, in this case Stella will be going to Collins next year, they do a presentation to their teachers, their support staff, and their parents of why they're ready to move forward, and what they've learned, and what, oh, I'm gonna cry. So after the meeting, I was like, I'm in budget snay, I'm just throw all the money, because it's just, it was amazing, and I just wanna say thank you. And I totally agree, these kids have gone through a, a different experience than I think what we are all used to when we think of school. So thank you for figuring it out, it's a complicated, tricky topic, so thank you. Motion time. And on that, I would like to make a motion to approve the budget request for public schools of seventy-one million, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-two. Did I get that right?
Great. Counselor Stott moves to approve the budget request for the Salem Public Schools in the amount of seventy-one million, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars, seconded by Counselor Hapworth. All those in favor? Three hands plus my own, it is approved. We'll take another motion. Motion to adjourn by Counselor Marko, all those in favor? Three plus my own, we are adjourned, thank you everybody.